Okay, so this is the Heritage and Events Committee, held on the 13th of November 2020, starting at six o'clock. We have got a lot to get through, so some of the items are just to note, maybe it's a discussion, if we can try and keep to the point and hopefully. So, 39624. Right, 39724, the minutes, the previous meeting has been distributed. Committee happy with the minutes? I can only call them as an accurate record of the meeting. Yeah?
I wasn't here.
Okay. I'll take that as a yes. Right. Does anyone have any disclosure or cuny or cunary interest? 39924, financial report, another information. If you could briefly present the financial report for us.
As committee members may or may not be aware, we've changed the format of the reporting to be a little bit more analyssically, just in hollowed numbers again, the budget and some explanation. So, I've just continued that, been doing this report. This report is to the 30th of September, because it was too early to do all the analysis that's required, if I'd used October information to get this out. I think, again, the format is exceptionally same. We've got commercial activities and non-commercial activities. So, I've broken down the report into the commercial activities, all hire fees, our whole high fees. We only budgeted for six months of all hire fees in 24, 25. The, you know, we still were slightly below budget. Our budget was nineteen thousand for six months, thirty-eight thousand for the year. But I think what we've got to bear in mind is that there hasn't been any growth. Our costs have grown, have increased, the cost of electricity, the cost of heating, business rates, et cetera, and all those costs have been going up, but our whole income has been remaining quite static. I'm not going to spend any more time talking about that, because I think that we've got a separate agenda right on all hire fees that's running the meeting, so we can talk about that then. In terms of bar trading, I think the hospitality industry has changed quite significantly. It reflects in the bar trading information that I've presented. You'll see that we've got bar sales in 22, 23, they were fifty-two thousand. They collapsed in 23, 24 to thirty-four thousand. And at the moment, they're nineteen thousand five hundred and sixty-four for a half-year. But even if that doubles, that will go up to thirty-eight thousand, which is a lot lower than it was in 22, 23. Our cost of sales has improved, sorry, our gross profit percentage has improved in 22, 23, it was forty-nine percent. It dropped to forty-one percent, but it's returned to the forty-nine percent. We stock tax more often, so these figures are a little bit more accurate and indicate that. So, again, there's nothing too much to worry about. The commercial partnerships, I think, one of the times talking about this at the previous meeting. Commercial partnerships are quite risky for us. They can work or they can't work. I think we've had some instances where they haven't worked, and the steer from a financial perspective is that we actually stay away from partnership events. You know, the whole hire, the bar, bar income is a more sustainable and safer option for us, and it helps us control our costs. So, the analysis that I've done, and I think I presented most of this at the last meeting, but the analysis that I did recently, for example, we promoted a disco after one of the Abbott concerts. We spent a hundred and fifty pounds on that, but, you know, the additional income we generated was around about seventy pounds from the till system. It's never going to be sustainable. So, again, we're away from those type of events. In terms of the mayoral and civic events, these are very standard, so I've set those out. Mayor making is way below budget, mayor civic reception is below budget, the mayor civic church service is slightly above, but it's about twenty-five pounds, so not too much speak to these say. Civic events for D-Day is the final cost in our books at the moment, is one thousand three hundred and one pounds. At the Battle of Britain, we haven't found any cost for that, but we possibly could be subsiding somewhere. And then the education activities, there is an educational report in the agenda, so, again, I think it's really just identifying those key sources and ensuring that we maximize our income for what we've got. The conclusion that I put into this report is quite keen. I think we've reduced the size of the heritage and events team. That was a decision taken at Corporate Services. It's come down quite significantly, so we really have to use our staff time optimally, you know. So, the staff are spending their time doing a whole lot of activities, and it's really a matter of weighing it up as to what should they be spending time on versus, you know, what are our priorities as a committee? And it should be fair that. So, we do a lot of activities, but they're not necessarily, you know, country this committee as an initiative. It's really important that we consider that. The second matter associated with that is that we have to balance our community outreach. We have summer programmes, we have school programmes, we have all sorts of things, but we have to balance that with affordability and, again, our staff scale. The third key thing coming out of this is we have to look at our whole hire rates and concessions. And, again, there's a separate paper on that later on in the meeting. And I think our event plan, overall, the communication of events, from a financial perspective, we need to improve that, and this is part of that process to do that. And that's really what has to say that particular matter.
Okay, any comments or questions, David?
Yeah, I completely agree, there needs to, there needs to be discussions around where staff time is focused and community outreach, all of the issues, you're right there at the bottom. To that end, a couple of things, really. The first one is, do we have an overall budget for the committee?
At the moment, we don't, because we've got to plan out some of the events. But I think what we've got to do is we've got to be a little bit more specific as to what those budgets are. So, at the moment, we set aside money for summer holiday programme or the Woodson programme, and it's really understanding what does that really, what does that entail? Because do you want to spend money, you know, having fairgrounds on the marketplace, on the Friday live event, for example? That's quite expensive, you know, is that the whole question, the whole thing is, is there a better way to spend the money? And I think that needs a little bit more oversight and interrogation, I think.
Yeah, I agree. The second point I would make is, and Doug's always going on me about this in particular, is a diary for events. We don't know what events are coming up and when, and we keep having events just pop up out of nowhere. I think we need, as councillors, as a committee, we need much better control over that. I believe there was a system put in place to do that, wasn't there? That hasn't really been instigated, is that fair?
I think what we did is we had those event sheets, I think it was approved in June, July. It was one of those, it was like a template of what, you know, the marketing and everything else had to happen around that. And unfortunately, that hasn't happened. But I think what we've done is, because it's really difficult from a financial perspective to report to this. I mean, the reason I had to do all this digging down is because I've got to do a budget forecast and do a budget for next year. But I think what we're trying to do is just get a proper sign off of it. So, part of our, part of the kind of resolutions that later on they will discuss is that the town clerk has said she wants to sign off every single event, regardless of what it is, so that she's aware of what it is, what we're trying to do, what we're trying to achieve, and who the topic market is. And that we implemented. So, I've done a check-through diary between now and February, sorry, March next year. The only events we have is around our Christmas switch-on. There's a Narnia trail, it's something to do with Narnia, I forget what it is, and there's the children's disco. And those are the only events that are planned at the moment. So, any future events will need to be signed off by the town clerk going forward.
That's really good. I think there needs to be more transparency, clarity over which events were actually set on. So, thank you.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so we're happy to note that, note the report, yeah? Next, 40024, update on mayoral and civic events. So, we've had the report come out of that, haven't we? Is there anything to add to that?
No, I mean, again, it is what it is.
Yeah.
They're the only ones that have happened since the last meeting.
Okay, does anyone, do you have anything to add or questions? I'd just like to say, we need to thank councillor Peters and McDonald for their efforts for the Remembrance Day parade. And, yeah, I mean, I didn't attend it, but by your accounts, it was very successful, so well done for that. And I think that's a good way forward as well for next year.
Funny enough, thanks, Chair. I was just looking at a list of things that we've got to improve on for next year. So, there's a big programme of tweaks, rather than improvements, I'll call them tweaks. But we've arranged for a meeting with the town clerk and Vic and Kate as well, so that we can sum up what we did well, what we didn't do so well. And then we can report that back to this committee properly, once we've discussed it, so that, you know, if there's any further input, it can be done well in advance of next remembrance, because we know it's going to happen next year. And one of the things that did sort of come up as a question mark in my mind on that was we were doing stuff without having really any idea what the spend might be, which goes back to your point. You know, so we were, you know, and we're all passionate people, so we all get a project and then think, right, let's do X without having any knowledge of what the parameters are money-wise. So, I think that's really important, thanks.
And Stuart?
I'll reiterate your thanks, I think, last night you received it, and, you know, I think as long as we minute the thanks, I think there needs to be done. Just on the town council, then, it's my point in terms of, oh, and Dan, I did miss being near the dais to take the eyes of the participants, which was something, not saying we want to be on top of the dais, but when you're a councillor and you know the community, when you see the people walking by in the casual eyes, it's very nice to have that engagement, and I just felt we lost that by being part of the parade as we went down to the end.
David, did you want to say something?
Yeah, again, I echo your comments. I think it's not too strong to say that Mac in particular, but also Vic, saved us from a public hammering, really. They did so much work. My concern is, with all due respect to both of you, I do not, or I would not like to see you two doing that much work again next year with regards to the finance, I think that's a good point. Again, we need more councillor input and more input generally into the event. It cannot be councillors running these things, albeit via a working group, in need of the officers, and we need to make that time available, which comes back to the first item on the agenda, on what we're planning and how we're doing it.
I think the, sorry, the problem is that the Royal British Legion, who was all, am I right? I've always talked about it.
Yeah, no, I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about the one at Skal, I'm talking about next year.
Yeah, I know, but the reason it was done this year is because they weren't able to do it. So, Mac and Vic took over, otherwise there wouldn't have been a remembrance.
I said that, but that wasn't really my point. The point was about more councillor, more officer input. Officers should lead rather than councillors, that's the point.
And I think in response to that, I think that's absolutely correct. This year was very different, and we kind of knew it was in the run-up with RBL folding and their reticence to be able to give us any correct answers to questions that we'd asked at the beginning of the year. And David will bear witness to how much we asked and how often we asked and how much we were promised and didn't get. The reason why I did all that ridiculous amount of paperwork was so that we could hand it over to the council officers. And Kate in particular, who did come in at the eleventh hour, is very aware of, you know, what she wants to pick up and actually what she wants to add to it, which is fine. So, it was done with the purpose of making it user-friendly, because actually, what we didn't realise was for years, the RBL had been doing this pretty much off the cuff. You know, we did it like that last year, and somebody remembered we did it, and that was it. There was nothing written down, so, you know, I take your point, but I think next year the council will be in a much better place to do it. Thanks.
Thank you. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just will say that now we're in a situation where officers can pick up an operational document and work with it. We had nothing. It was almost at the eleventh hour when, and we wouldn't have even been delivering this event this year if the Royal British Legion hadn't gone into administration. It's always been their event. The council have never been involved to that degree. It's been really frustrating to get any information. There's nothing documented, and sadly, the person who had all the knowledge passed away just prior to last year's remembrance. So, it's been a huge, the reason we leant on you, Mac, is your experience being ex-forces, et cetera. We didn't have those skills to prepare that operation of documents. Already, Kate Bradley, the new civic officer, is booking people for next year's event because of the document that you've produced, which is fantastic. So, hopefully, we'll be in a better place next year.
Thank you. So, are we happy just to note the update for that, yeah?
Sorry, I had a couple of points. I have two things. Do you want feedback for the event now, or is that further than email? I don't know how to, you've got the feedback, what sort of best, like, feedback one, like, for councillors to give feedback of specifically remembrance? How would you like that given?
We're going to organise a deep brief meeting, and the town clerk will be present, and the officers, and, you know, hopefully, councillor McDonald and Peters, and that would, so you could be at that by email if you wanted to.
I don't want to take everyone's time and now.
Then we can actually.
Tweets as well.
There is a deep brief for the town clerk's office.
And the other thing was, I might have just missed really wrong, or maybe I've got my calendar wrong. The agenda item is upcoming events for 24, 25. Are we talking just to the end of this year? Because the agenda pack stops at December, so I don't know why it says 2025.
It's only because it's the mayoral year, there's no civic events.
From December until May.
Yeah. The only real civic events that we can talk about now going forward is we've introduced the flag policy, so they will be raising the flag between that sign, Onwell Day, et cetera, et cetera. Ceremonial for council is within the civic agenda, and that's in February. But apart from that, it's one of those troughs of the civic calendar.
Okay.
Right, so we're all happy to note that as an update.
Sorry, not trying to, got some, fix your thing, mate.
Yeah, okay, right, so we'll move on to 40124, update on town and partnership events. We've all had the report. Does anyone have any questions or comments to make on that?
Just on that.
Yeah.
I know we're talking about where we're going to spend the office time, but the feedback and the different type of people we get for the Heritage Open Days weekend is something I think we should be mindful for in setting our priorities, because I think our ability to participate in that and bury our offer does yield a different type of visitor coming to the town. And it's great that now we've got, Katie and David have done it for a few years, appreciate that side of it, and they're looking to develop.
But I would say, Stuart is well aware, there was a period in the last decade when Heritage Open Days were almost non-existent in Norfolk, because we didn't have anyone coordinating the heritage assets within the town. Tina started by bringing that more in-house, so we had more control over coordinating that programme. Katie has taken it on in recent years. If we was to make a decision in terms of only focusing on ourselves and what we have to offer for Heritage Open Days, it would be vastly less appealing than it is now. We have feedback from the Heritage Open Days Association, if that's the right term, that we coordinate and offer something really, really well-planned in Norfolk. It's all, it always holds a, quite an extensive section of their brochure, which goes out county and region. And we do attract a lot of visitors from other areas of the surrounding region, because people like to do various different activities, different gears and tick off the box. So, they can show that we do actually attract a lot of visitors to that. So, I think it's important, but it's obviously up to councillors whether they want officers to continue to have that wider focus of coordinating the town plan.
Yeah, yes, Ma.
I was just going to add to that. We're quite lucky in Norfolk in that we're one of the only counties that actually has a Heritage Open Days committee that organises the events for the whole, or collects all the events for the whole of the county. Most others don't. So, you know, that's a real plus to us. And, you know, particularly when I think we're looking for, you know, anything we can get in the way of tourism, it's something I don't think we should be in too much of a hurry to dismiss.
Yeah. Okay, any other comments, questions? So, we're happy to note that as an update? Yeah, thank you. Right, 40124, update on town and partnership events, 2024 to 25, which again has come out. Do we've got the past events?
Oh, no.
We've done that one, sorry. Oh, education, that's it. Is that our update on education projects? Which again has all come out in the project. Has anyone got any comments or questions about that?
Just want to get a sense of, the urban council, I know her time, I believe, is split across events and education. Do you have a sort of sense of how much time to spend on each?
It varies. Within the brief that you see in this particular report, there's very few school visits. In the next week, she had one this afternoon, she's got another one Thursday, she's got two next week. It comes in peaks and troughs, it's very much dictated to by schools. We've had a lot of cancellations from schools in September, because they've just been channeled in different directions. Thankfully, they're now trying to factor them in over the next couple of weeks before we hit the Christmas break. So, it is a bit fluid in terms of that, but that's why we extended her brief to be education and family projects, not just education liaison officer, because we realised that there was more to do. So, she's now developing other areas such as, you know, the family activities, the family products, projects, where we can get more, less.
My impression is that her role is split somewhat cross sort of event side of it, as well as the education side of it.
She supports other events, obviously, but that.
Just trying to get a sense of, sort of, this is just how you say, or does, you don't expect to spend so much time on X or Y?
So, what we're looking at in terms of our, we've just had new contracts, we've had a whole HR review. We look at our staff members now with primary focus and collective focus. So, Amber's primary focus would be to develop education and family projects. And I would say that would take up seventy-five percent of her contracted thirty hours. And then the other hours, if she's got some downtime, and you could equate that to, we've just been talking about Kate Bradley, the civic officer, the next three months is very much her civic below. And she would be then drafted in to help other members of the team with certain activities. So, as a manager, I have to manage those peaks and troughs with various different employees. But I would say it's difficult to split in terms of, I can't say that it's fifty percent education, forty percent family projects, and, you know, ten percent of collective responsibilities, because it could differ from week to week, month to month. But her primary focus is to develop schools' education programmes as well as family projects. That's her brief. What we probably need to do, that's come out of here, we need to have a more detailed focus of what we do, rather than just report on specific school visits. We need a more detailed report of what Amber's doing. But again, she would have played a big part in the Heritage Open Days and the Heritage Festival, but that's specifically not one of her classified primary focuses, that's Katie's. But she would support Katie as part of her collective responsibilities. I'm not sure whether I'll make myself totally.
I would assume, because I think, and it probably starts on the extent of what we talked about tomorrow, and I think that, sort of like, she's going to be there with Katie, and there's other things, we've got sort of bigger events coming up. For example, the day, the day day, I mean, you're seeing, you know, she's going to be working with her, align what she does.
So, something, yeah, something like, something like VE Day, as with D-Day. D-Day, Katie and Amber were very at the front of all officers in those events. And again, VE Day next year would be very much an area that she would support Katie. That's more Katie's brief, although I would classify VE Day as bordering on the civic agenda. We'll talk about that in a minute, because we need to talk about town.
Yes. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so we're happy to note that as an update, yeah? Right, 40324, programme of events for the 2025-26 budget year, which you've all had. So, the programme events is important, because we need to confirm this before the budget-setting process.
So, could I?
So, we've got the possible events there, but obviously, they will depend on the budget, don't they? Which we haven't got round to doing, so.
Yeah, so Alan and I had a conversation around trying, for Alan to try and format some kind of budget going forward to be presented to councillors, and that has to be adopted by January. So, we're up against time, as usual in these matters. So, what I've tried to do here is the givens, in terms of the first two, mayoral events and civic events. They are almost set in stone, they are what civic agenda is and the mayoral agenda. That's not going to change year to year, apart from under civic events next year as a special anniversary in terms of VE and VJ Day, as we did D-Day last year. The following year, they will be taken out, and it will just be Battle of Britain Remembrance Concert, and now the Remembrance Parade as well as the reception. In terms of town events, we have a, in our terms of reference, we do state that we have a, we have to plan a minimum of four town events a year. My suggestion in this document is that because the conversations around VE Day and the date it is, the eighth of May, is so close to what we classified as one of our town events in terms of Woodson last year, that I think we're going to be taking on too much. We, you know, staff, time and dedication to those kind of big events is huge. So, I would advocate that we only do three events, because the VE Day celebrations, from what I understand from councillor's suggestions, it's going to be a large event. That's if we decide to do that. Again, we've got an agenda item on that later. So, I've taken the liberty to suggest that we only do three big events, knowing that VE Day will be another one. So, that gives us some semblance around those kind of civic and town events in terms of heritage and events programmes.
Okay, any other comments, questions, Kerry, you have?
Yeah, I think it probably is a good idea to trim back on town events, bear in mind VE Day. What concerns me, and as you rightly say, David, is that VE Day is roughly six months away now, I think. Why has nothing been done? Why are we so late on this? I mean, this is a date that we've known about, well, I'd say it's only sort of semi-seriously since nineteen fifty or something. We knew that date was coming up. Why have we not been addressed to this sooner? That's my issue there.
No, then, Ma.
I think you're going to respond to that, so if you want, go.
I think I can respond.
I think I can respond on that because we discussed it on the September meeting. So, and we said we would put a working group together. Didn't have an October meeting, so where we are.
And then the working group was taken up by all the stuff.
Yeah, yeah. So the, so the working group, and we did meet and we've, we've had the, you know, we sit down and discuss exactly what we want. The trouble is, we're now discussing it for the first time and this is, you know, first occasion. And this, this shows the, the slow speed at which we sometimes work by waiting for the next committee to come along. And it's something I think is quite frustrating. But yeah, I do take your point that we, we didn't actually say we were going to do something until September.
Could I also add? And, and this does flag a flaw in the process of having approval by committee all of the time. In the past, we have delegated authority to a working group of councillors. So councillors will still get that approval authority that they will be specifically working on. However, in terms of V E Day, the conversations that we've had in, in the working groups has led us to a large scale event which could never have been sanctioned outside the full committee or even full council, as you will find out. So I think there has been some issues. We, we have done some work on it. Committee has discussed what they would like to see. Vic has been very much a lead in that because he was the one that came to committee. It's sad he's not here tonight. So I, I, I understand your frustration, Kerry. You haven't been a member of the committee, so you haven't been aware of those conversations necessarily, but we have done some work. V E Day.
I'll read them in a minute.
Yeah, well, then.
And, and it does ignore the fact that we've known about this for so long, starting it, you know, due recognition, we need to start that a lot earlier. And I think this is a lesson to be learned for further events.
But we did, and we haven't made those decisions to whether it's a large scale or a small scale event.
I, I still don't see why that couldn't have been done, I think.
Do you want to say something?
Yeah, I'm, I, I, I can forget the other thing, I really tried to remind you, but I, I just am a little bit frustrated because I think your last meeting now is where like a timetable of, okay, what have you got planned to start putting them in the calendar? We've got a list which is a bit hard to navigate and I struggle to understand and it's only just come, so I feel like, I thought that was coming much earlier. So I feel like I'm not fully preparing, I'm heading to what events I plan still, which is frustrating and trying to get through. The other thing is, we're getting, for me it was a bit circular and I might have missed something, but we've got sort of budget spends here and events here, but what is our budget? What was it last year? I've not got anything like that to compare against. So I feel like I'm, I'm trying to make information, like make decisions in the dark at the moment. And I don't know if it's just that I've missed something or I've not been correct on looking at something, but I, I don't feel like I have the information I needed at the moment, which is frustrating.
I just want to make a couple of points then regarding the other issue of the working groups. And we, we, we've been going around this issue, whether more members say that the way it was organised, how the groups are working, whether it's going forward to V E Day. I am part of a group with Mark, with Matt and Vic. I haven't been as present as they are, so credit to them that underpinned the positivity, much to Mark, to Mark in the, in the remembrance. And now Vic is really pushing forward with organizing V E Day. I think we found ourselves this year, this is very unique for a set of circumstances we wouldn't want to count on. We certainly want to contribute issue relation. So that's been discussed and there's no point in repeating it, but it kind of threw a curve ball that we as a council, you know, council officers stuck at work and that's something incredible, safe face to the public, on the top of the names. Obviously, because we are the same working group and this was about, working groups are about people volunteering as councils be part of them. There's no enforceability or obligation to be part of it. I put my hand up, together with Mark and Vic, say, yeah, we really work on this together with the officers and we'll do our best and this that we did, all credit to them. I just kind of cruise by and I hope to be more hands-on and I'm in a bit of a bitter sweet spot because I'm going to be made next year, so I have all the interesting things running well. So there's no doubt about it that I want whatever events, you know, even, V E Day is still going to be on the Chris message, but it's a matter of, I'm there to support them. And V J Day after that, I'll, I'll have to take on. But I, we, I have all the, the interest on things running well. However, however, I do understand, and I think people need to realise that the same working group, it is to, it is to deliver remembrance and now needs to deliver the next two, the same people with the limitations that, obviously, we are councils, not full-time employees of the council, but, you know, we're doing this on our spare time. If there are more councils that want to get involved in tasks that's written only, then maybe we can push things forward. I understand that waiting for council to, for committee approval information, because we don't always have committees, which puts us back. If we, if we could have done it in September, October, great, we're meeting November. We don't do, no, we don't follow, we don't do calendar for the, for the meetings, we follow whatever meeting calendar we given by the council and this is the ones we have that is fixed nearly in advance. We have to work with the dates, not on our own choice personally, I'll speak for myself or my colleagues, but we don't get issues those days, those days are fixed on the calendar and we have to perform on them. You know, they, as a point, we did meet, we had a bit of a discussion, but then we paused everything because remembrance was more, I was going to, I'm not saying there is one more important than the other events coming up, it's not about which one seems important, but it was substantially more important that we got it right. And that's because we had so many issues in the past, plus the reasons dismantling and everything, we took, they took on the bulk of the work, it wasn't theirs. So first of all, my thanks go to Mark and Vic as my colleagues in the, in the, in the working group. Secondly, they've done a lot. We can't really expect them to do a whole lot more, even though that all we will, will to them, that I'm sure that they would like to do more because that's the kind of people they are. But you are right, this is something that the council, the admin and the staff needs to take on. Luckily for us, they've done so much work that they put it all on paper, like sort of laid, you know, built us up a map of what to do next year, should we have any similar issues with that. Now, that releases us to focus on events going forward. You are, you are right, they are six months away, so we need all the help we can get. It's easy to criticise, but we have to understand that we are limited to our, what we can do with the time we have. Thank you.
Doug, I think you want to say something.
No, I, I can wait.
Just very quickly, my criticism isn't, was not of the working groups at all in any way, shape or form. That's not where, that's not where my criticism lay. And all I can do is just thank you for the hard work we've done, honestly.
Mark and Vic let down the, they pushed this forward and they got it done and that's all credit to them.
So Stuart, do you want to say something?
Doug's point that, you know, we haven't got the budget, the budget process is not set. There are some guidelines on there in what the current budget is. We've mentioned that these are similar things that we've delivered in the past. So I think there's a good feeling for what we're proposing. Those numbers, you know, we'll give you a ballpark number of what the budget will be, but until the budget's set, obviously that might constrain.
There is a difficult issue here in, in that. If we don't do the budget first, it doesn't really matter what the event is. So as an example, when we had D Day last year, as a coun, as a new, relative new council, we agreed that we either go big or, or don't do something wishy-washy in the middle. When we came up with a plan and it came out, the, the, you know, and it came to the rest of the group, everybody thought, well, actually, that's not enough now, we want more. So we put more effort into something and it was all last minute, it was very last minute doing it then. And that was because of this, this time lag. But also, we hadn't worked out whether it was a big project, big money, or small project, small money. Now, I can feel pretty much the same's going to happen to V E Day because we, we've gone into it a little bit frightened that we're going to come out small and everyone's going to go, well, that's not big enough because it's a great big event.
That's true.
So we've gone big. We've gone big with no budget idea. Now, so, so this isn't a criticising of, of the way we've done it, it's just a fact that we're a small council with big aspirations. And I think that's, that's the truth between the officers and the councillors. They're always pushing for more, but actually, very early, we need to give Alan the, the grounding and say, we want to go big on V E Day, what money have we got for the year? And then we can work within it. Because otherwise, we're always going to have this bit of, hmm, bit expensive, we should have known, or we didn't do. It's because we, we're always catching up with the next event, you know, just like we had a bit of an unfortunate with D Day, then Remembrance, then we're always a little bit behind the drag curve. And that's, that's my honest view. I don't think there's any criticism should be levelled at anybody, to be honest.
So Vic has just stolen my thunder in terms of that. Can I just actually also say that there is current budget levels there. When it's an expenditure-only budget like those top two are, we do very well to keep ourselves within budget. And in actual fact, the difference between what we're talking about with V E Day and D Day is exactly that. As a council, you set a budget of thirteen hundred pounds for D Day and as Alan's just reflected in a previous, we, 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 we outspent that by a pound. We have nothing to work to, to V E Day at the moment and that's what's holding us up. I've got entertainment on hold that I can book tomorrow if you give me the open of the budget, but I can't, I can't.
I think just from the office perspective, I mean, the challenge is, you know, if you ever look at, at what we spent on civic events this year, three thousand six hundred, three thousand six hundred pounds, which is not very much, you know, so if we're planning to do a V E Day by that, the question becomes, do we take some money out of the town events, which there's a quite substantial budget of five thousand and actually do it that way? Because I think it has to be some, we have to have a guideline, is it a ten thousand pound event, is it a fifteen thousand pound event, or is it a five thousand pound event? And, and budgeting also works, you know, that's a little bit of a chicken and egg situation. But I have to have some guidance as to how much do we need to find because then we, we have to find it somewhere else, you know? And we can find it somewhere else if need be, you know? I mean, we've got a chief, but, but I, I just need a guide, this, I can't, you know, I, I feel putting three thousand six hundred pounds into the budget while then we're talking about a, an afternoon event, you know, if you're lucky, that's what, that's what we're talking about. So it would be interesting to hear, do you want an option of both? Do you want a contingency advance? Because I mean, the budget only gets approved in January. If we try and start with a big event, ten thousand pounds or whatever it is, and, and that, we can build that in. We might not be able to afford it, but, you know, we can't make that decision now, but we're, we're in the aspirations, there's, there's nothing to bother me to find, help find that money or look at different ways of, of, of funding it. So that happens in the conversation about this.
She does, actually, that's kind of my point. And I, I was a two pointer, one was going to be, why can't we just look at last year's and do an average of previous large scale events and work off of that set amount? And then the point you made, which was, why can't we just give a number, give a ten, aim for a ten, and if we get less, we get less, we deal with it. But I think the consensus is for things like V E and V J, we want to go bigger than smaller because, one, because it's the right thing to do, but two, we don't need to give anyone a stick to beat us with, and doing a small scale event is going to break us across the coals. I'd rather of aim big, I was going to prophesize, but, and allocate a potential amount of X, Y, Z. And then if we have to chop things off at a later date, we have to chop things off. I'd rather set and go bigger and, and start planning and get things provisionally booked in and stuff. We can start booking things in and paying for deposits in an amount that we know for a fact we want to get. I mean, a large scale event, what are we normally talking?
I mean, the Christmas lights, such a, probably our largest event. So if you're looking at five grand, seven thousand, that enables you to do quite a substantial event, you know? I mean, we have to organise for Christmas lights, we have to organise security, we have to organise house and safety first, A and B, so those are the costs that have been brought up for that and some entertainment. So if we had to sit down and say, you know, that's, that's, this is funny for us. And then I think, sorry, I, I think what progress would actually be made in terms of, of, of moving it towards getting some more action player that we can present to the committee and, and just the working group in between. So by then, we'd set a deadline, by then we'd say that that budget's going to be finalised because we should be able to do that. And an action plan to, to, to then, to guide the officers. And we can work together in supporting the working group doing that.
Because if we can ballpark and then go a little bit over, we know we can put on a large event for three and a half, for example, we should be okay to go with five. I'm not saying like, let's put twenty five thousand, we're only going a, a, a few thousand more than what we already know we can do and we're probably going to get.
I wonder if it's worth me just going quickly over what our, our actual thoughts were for V E Day. Yeah, I do apologise that we haven't got anything ready to give and show and all that, but we've been a bit tied up, you know, so.
To approve the programme of events this year, are the committee happy to approve the programme of events?
Is that with the amendment of dropping it down to three events and V E?
Sorry, just a big question. Mayor's civic, mayoral civic reception is in sixth June. We normally mention that we're doing, become mayor of the city of the civic reception, time to pay for the event to be around the fourth of July, if that's required.
So to be honest, would you have to put in a date, which is roughly when? Yeah, no, it's not fixed, it's entirely up to the men. Chris actually moved it several weeks ahead of our usual. So I've just put it, for the sake of the report, I put it roughly.
Yeah, that's what I was wanting, it's a temporary date and then we can work around with. Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, so I know.
So if we, but take out one of the.
With the three air, we don't need to change it.
Yeah, so we don't need to change it, do we? Okay, so are the committee happy to approve the programme of events?
Yep.
So can we have a proposal seconded for that, please?
So could I also just add, because I've just seen the recommendations on this agenda item and recommendation number three, can I just also confirm that committee did discuss the fact that we didn't want to have these risky partnership events going forward and that has already been taken on board and we've not planned any of those. So the issue there, I think this is Alan's report, the issue there is that we wouldn't be doing those. So you can be assured that we're not going to take those risks with those kind of events.
The events we.
Do you want to do all three recommendations at once?
Sorry, are we doing all three at once? Can I ask a question about the second recommendation? I thought we discussed a bit, bit of outline, I sort of get rid of that, but the second one, can I have the procedure for the community version and sort of like, we discuss that?
Actually, I'm obviously doing my financial report, we just discussed this a little bit, so. I can talk about the new procedure, I think there was questions from the councillors before the new procedure. And this is ready, it's just to formalise that procedure and say, you know, these events have to be subject to, to visual, to time bar scrutiny and then to committee scrutiny.
Yeah, that they won't be in the partnership event, so I thought, yeah, we have, we said that, yeah.
Can I have a really, really dumb question before we move on and embarrass myself? What is summer fun? Is that the continental market?
No. It literally is just a working title for whatever we classifies as our summer town event. So this year was all Crofton Perry, the year before was Seaside Special, that kind of thing.
Thank you, sorry, as you were.
Okay, so do, right. So are you happy then to propose a second for all three recommendations?
At the same time.
At the same time?
Yeah.
Yeah. Proposal was Stuart and Carla's seconded.
Great, thank you.
Four oh four two four, V E and V J Day, eighteenth anniversary. Things you want to add, Matt?
So I think really it's, if, if we look at a vision of what we wanted, now, there was a couple of options. We do something in the town, which limits us with crowd numbers, or we do something on one of the pieces of ground we own. And that's why we looked at Melford Common. If you imagine looking at the bottom of Melford Common towards the, towards the old bridge, that bottom piece would be a. If you imagine looking at the bottom of Melford Common towards the, um, towards the old bridge, that bottom piece would be a car park. The road that divides it would be the limit of the, the display area, and along that would be a stage. And what we were looking at for that was the back of a, um, um, yeah, curtain side, really. We also talked about, um, as you look down there, and, and the reason I say look down there, it is slightly stepped as you go up. So it is a kind of natural viewing platform, is that we've got the stage, uh, the possibility of having a, a large screen to one side. Because a lot of things that we didn't do this year, we could do, which is, um, in between acts or dead periods, we can have, um, visual displays of Stepford in the past, talking heads, you know, a bit, a little bit like what Kate did with the veteran, that kind of thing to, to fill the space. And then on the right hand side, food stalls next to the road, on the left hand side, vintage vehicles. With the top right up towards Black Horse being, uh, left aside for the possibility of a fun fair. So that's, that's what we were looking, it's an afternoon picnic event, really, so it's not gonna go into the evening. And that's, that's exactly the, our, our vision of it, there's some more detail on the, on the paper there. I think that's about it, David, isn't it?
Yeah.
Any comments, questions?
That's really good. Yeah, um, my only slight concern really is, um, Stuart, you've got seven hundred quid here for security, is that gonna be enough? That, that's my concern. Guiding people about, um, having people on car park duty, that sort of stuff, still needs a lot of people. That's just a concern that immediately struck me overall.
No, we talk about, we talked about car parking, similar to how Charles Burrell did it for its open days by using the cadets. We thought that would be quite a, a good, they were actually very good at it. And, uh, you know, I did try and park somewhere that they didn't want me to, and I soon got told off. So, you know, that, that was quite, the security side of things was, um, was really about looking after what, what was on at the bottom of the show. Uh, and of course, we've got the, whatever the fun fair event is at the top. But we've also got things like toilets, we know we've got Castle Park, but that would not be enough. So we know we'd have to bring some in, so there, there were those other costs that we considered. Uh, but actually, when you bore the whole town down, there isn't anywhere where you could do that unless you go at the other end, you know, which is even bigger, even more difficult to, so that, that was our, that was the reason we thought of this.
Any other comments, questions?
Matt's requesting, feel free to shout out, it sounds really simple, but can we have a sign made? Because a sign made, a banner or something, because all I'm picturing is loads of wonderful stuff on the square, everyone crying, going, oh, what's that for? But do we actually have anything that's gonna say, that we're gonna put up to say why we are doing all this? Make it very obvious.
Like, like VE Day or?
Anything, yeah, a banner or something, because the Remembrance, I know everyone knows what Remembrance is, but we had the poppy wall. Very obvious why we are all on the fun square, what we're going on, otherwise people are gonna walk past and say, oh, council, uh, council's put, um, you know, a merry-go-round on, how lovely, you know, uh, we, we are making an obvious deal in a show. Can we have something up somewhere, use the scaffold then? Hopefully it won't be there, but hey, stick a banner on it, you know, just something that's, the date, what it is, incredibly obvious. We are Stepford Town Council in the top right and underneath, DJ Day, VE Day, whatever it is with the dates, the calendar, but something to show that the, the reason why we are doing it, like, we're not like, we just put an event on.
Yeah, yeah, and by that.
Yeah, I'm just wondering where you've got to, if you're thinking on who the performers and the headliner might be.
Yeah, so we've got, um, the USAP Girls, um, David's got some, I'm not saying that David's got a load of girls lined up, but he's got some acts that we thought of, and it was gonna be a very wartime sort of tribute style anyway. Rather, yeah, it was always gonna be that, there's, we've also spoke to the, um, the dance group, they've got Siroc, but we were looking for something like Lindy Hop. So we did ask, uh, Mildenhall, and they said they're gonna get back to us, Remembrance has got in the way, but that was, it was that kind of feel. And what we really wanted was the ability to not only have a stage, but have people to come out and interact and be involved in the crowd and get people doing stuff, you know? Uh, I'll, I'll give you an example, I went to, um, a fireworks display at Hevingham Hall last weekend. Massive great affair, incredibly well organised. Um, the Hoosiers on, huge bonfire, fireworks, all of it. In amongst it, they had one group of people just playing drums, all dressed up, a bit weird. And it was one of the biggest crowd attractions, it was like the Pied Piper of Hamelin, and people were following them around. So I think what, what we thought that actually having something that's immersive or, you know, would be really good. So it's anything like that, and of course, things like Dad's Army and that, you know, lend itself to that kind of thing. Historic vehicle clubs that we know of, that would be happy to fill up some of the side, not necessarily all military stuff, but period vehicles to dress it up.
Yes.
If, if we take what, what's been proposed and this offices start developing this a little bit more and, and ask the working group to meet sometime in December, so we can have a formal, uh, kind of presentation back to this committee with the action plans, you know, a little bit more specific dates and everything else, would that, would the committee be happy with that as, as a next step forward?
Yeah, that's uncool, you know, please.
Just, just anything that you need the committee to do in order to?
I think as a working group, um, question is, I'm happy with the overall feel of it. And if you are, can we just get on with it? And we really need a date given to us when we say we want to know that it's booked by then or, because otherwise it will drift on. You know, we need a little bit of direction as much as we'd like some answers.
I think we've got to get these things booked sooner rather than later. And, and, you know, if we can give you that guidance and then Alan can comfortably sit there to say, well, get those performers booked in, because the last thing I want to do is lose out on some of the performance.
And that, and that was a key thought of ours, so back to what Vic said, really, some of these acts are, are gonna be booked up now. A bit like booking Remembrance, you know, they're, they're already thinking of what they're gonna be doing, so, you know, we need to do it this side of Christmas.
So can I just get a bit of clarity in terms of what you see on the chart there? That's over the budget that we have for our total town events budget, just for VE Day. So you are happy to spend that kind of money to statistically deliver VE Day in Melford Common? I'm sure we can, you know, we're talking to people now, I'm sure we can screw down the, the five and a half thousand for performance. That's just to sort of give us a little bit of wiggle space, because VE Day, um, Terry's right, it's happening all over the country. It's a bit like New Year's Eve, and you ask a disco to perform, they'll double their prices, because everybody wants a disco on New Year's Eve. It's the same with VE Day, so it's gonna be expensive, but we'll probably start looking at different options. Um, but you're talking about, well, what's up there already, and we've still got, um, technical support and, um, and Vic is investigating the stage lorry. I don't know whether there's gonna be a cost to that, it's already over twelve thousand pounds.
This is the big, so, this is the big event that you're actually talking about, so if we start there, we might just go back. But at least we've got a starting point to, to get an action plan out, and I think that's really.
The only other thing I would say is I was looking at trying to offer up an alternative, which would be to have sort of venue events, marketplace events and things like that, and scale it down but have something going on. And I noticed in the Carnegie on the Friday night, um, the Dad's Army Appreciation Society are in either Carnegie or Guildhall. And that's because at this time of year, there's lots of visitors coming to town to visit Dad's Army in Brestham. So there is gonna be a lot of outside visitors that will probably come to this event. My worry is that when we've done Jubilee's, for instance, the musical genres can span decades and appeal to lots of people. This is very niche, if you don't like nineteen forties music, you're gonna get bored within half an hour. Although Matt hasn't told, you know, told you about all the other attractions of the world, like vehicles and things like that. So, um, it's a big, it's a big ask to invest that sort of money in the one event.
Yeah, I understand your concern, but at the same time, I think we've indicated that we want to go bigger on something that is nationally important. If we don't do it, then our community, well, they've done much for it. Uh, yeah, I don't think, you know, Terry's saying, we've known about this money for a while, it is of importance to us, so I think we need to go higher.
With the intent to maybe save where we can.
Absolutely, yeah.
Um, are you looking at generating some income from it as well?
Yeah, there is opportunities.
There are opportunities, but it's not, I'm not gonna cover much of it.
I mean, we're, we're taking one of the TTC marquees up to Melford Common and have a beer tent. I mean, a lot of the food vendors, we can, you know, not charge ridiculously low pitch fees. They are, they're used to paying later, you know, so we can generate.
Yeah, but we can't guarantee that.
We can't guarantee that.
Right, so are we happy then for a way forward, um?
We'll report that in the city.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, so that's gonna be the way forward, yeah, is everyone happy with that? Yeah, good. Um, okay, four oh five two four, Stepford Community Festivals. Um, Ali, you have an update for us?
A little bit, um, uh, the, the paper that I sent out was very early on, it was actually before most of the meetings that I had to try to organise this and get this off the ground, getting a, a, a more of a final plan for it. Um, the idea is to, you know, conciliate the fact that if I may, next year, and, you know, being someone that represents a lot of different communities, a different multiculturality and all those side, and all those things that I don't need to repeat, because they're obvious, is to actually make the most and bring, uh, footfall and bring visitors, um, and, you know, get people, that's to have some fun and to actually, uh, get people, you know, attract people to town. So under that, that, that principle, uh, we need to be together and attracting visitors, uh, and movement to town. I decided to put on this sort of a festival, a community event per se. I wish we mentioned today and for the others that, um, ideally this would be done on the weekend of the fifth and sixth of July. Um, that's well into, it'll be well into my mayorship, and it is a time of the year where fingers crossed the weather should be good. Um, and would be a mix of an open festival for the most part, with some elements, elements that can be done indoors. Now, G I, the generic of it is to have two days for different activities with a lot of different organisations involved. And I mean a lot, I mean quite a lot, and I've spoken to some of them, and there's still quite some of them that I'm gonna be talking to throughout this month. Um, starting by the top, one of the first ones that I spoke was the Norfolk County Council. And that's because they have a little, a grant program going on at the moment, accepting people, footfall to towns through the local town. It is only two K, it's not very much, it covers any overheads. But when I presented to them, to the panel, it, it, it was evident that the money was good, it was great, but that's, that's not what I was seeking there, by presenting them the project. What I was seeking was the, that actual endorsement by facilitating any issues, whether it was with licenses to make this event, uh, to, with marketing, with social medias and different, uh, channels to publicise the event, to actually attract the people and, and get that footfall into town. Um, they, I, there was members of Brecon Council there as well. I am due to meet with Brecon Council, so I wasn't able to meet before this meeting, but this will happen throughout the rest of November, starting in December. Um, because County Council and a few the others did say, okay, if we're gonna look for funds, you know, supporting, kind of, for funds and licenses, et cetera, Brecon Council is the entity to do so, so we're gonna, I was gonna have a good sit with them and see how they can support us. Now, they also can help with the money. And it became clear for me for a lot of all of this meeting before is that we as a festive town council, we don't have any money left. So this is no news to me, this is not exactly what I'm seeking here. Um, so what, what I really want is to make, make sure that the town gets involved, this part of it, any benefits from it. Because living in a may have been local, this is what it's all about. We don't have the money, at least there's gotta be some way that in kind or with certain, uh, collaboration that we can get this off the ground. Now, I do have the support of some, some institutions besides the local ones, like the county and district, et cetera. For example, through, you know, through my links with the different, with different communities, I have a good relationship and I'm in the board of the embassy and consulate for the Portuguese communities in London. One thing that they've been offering to me all along is that they have a subsidy, like a grant, is, is annual for the Portuguese communities to put anything that promotes, you know, connection, culture, music, whatever they have to do with community, for community to celebrate their backgrounds, et cetera. That part is there, I, because I also have a shelfy outside of my council room, there was a lot of opportunities for me to claim this money. I never did, particularly when I became a councillor, and then it became evident to me that I couldn't become a deputy mayor, I thought, let's, let's hold. Hold it there, because the right time will come. And if I'm gonna get this money, I'm gonna put it to good use. For them it's a plus, you know, I'm, I'm a figure representing the community for them, they'll probably rely on me, and they do have the money to support me in doing this. So the application window is now, I'm literally what I'm gonna do, I'll ask the media to establish an interest, I'm working on the bidding. I don't have a problem with this grant, because like I said, the money's been there for me to take for quite a while, so it's pre-approved. But it's a process, you know, applying till December, carry on applying in the early, in the start of the year, and then they're not, you'll be paid on or off before, um, well, before July, so sometimes maybe June is when the mindset is people to do these things, but that's not an issue. I'm aiming for something, this cross of the order of minimum fifteen thousand pounds from them, if not twenty thousand. And that's not a big ask, that is a small portion from what I, I could ask them, especially if I'm gonna do a big event that has a little bit of ripple effect afterwards, which I can justify on the back reports afterward. But that's, that's my bit of the work from the side. Um, so I get the cash from them, I ask for other institutions, the Brazilian consulate, et cetera, et cetera, um, about other resources, not only about the money. Obviously, what we need, we need performers, we need dancers, music, all sorts of things. And ob- obviously the grants alone are not gonna be enough, there's gonna be a degree sponsorship. So in order to get that, to get that together, we're gonna be, I'm gonna be talking to a lot of companies, so sponsorship is the next thing. Those banners will, they're gonna hopefully come into that, because there's corporate sponsorship from local companies, why not? I think it's only better they can involve and help us out, so hopefully I'll get that extra support on top of what we're already doing and the funds that I pretty much have lined up for this from the different authorities. Um, as a working group, obviously I'm gonna be mayor, so I'm sort of leading, but I also run a charity. So we first had a conversation with a few people about how will be the right way to go about this. Fortunately, I have some of my colleagues, um, from the council, the councillors that are keen to work with me, and it's great, because I told them I need all the help I can get, and obviously it's gonna be a group effort for the town's benefit. I can sort of, you know, make those links and liaisons with the, with the embassies and all those, the other founders and the other institutions, but it's good to have a local working group that can get this project off the ground. So there's a few people that are actually in the interest, we're gonna form a committee, we're gonna process them, doing a bit more just to make it a little bit more official, even because of, you know, like a council, it's gotta be a class, and obviously, so we're taking care of the constitutional side of the paperwork of the, of the project. We don't have a lot of time, I understand that, but it has to be run around spring this year, because, because that's when the money's like that. And if I'm gonna bring the money to do the event in December, rather than take it to do something somewhere else, I need to come up with something and I need to make sure the event happens this year around this time of the year, to make sure that happens and that any money comes to us as a town, rather than, you know, if it's going to be of somebody else that does something somewhere else, do this way. So the money is there, I might as well use it, that's the way I see it. Um, so I've spoke to countless groups, one of the ones that will collaborate with us, and I'm yet to meet with them to define how, you know, much, what kind of collaborations they're gonna have, is the Essex Cultural Association. That one's usually organised the Puncher Festival, I mean, that's it. They, they were known for their festival, and they do very well, very colourful, colourful festival. We, we had very brief conversations, there's, there's two options up in the air. Is it merge our festival with the Puncher, they make it one large festival? Or no, we'll keep it separately, because they do it more individual of the summer, which is a different time, sort of different time of the year-ish. Um, and just with a, a, a good element of their performances and their dance groups to be part of this one with us. There's also a possibility of merging funds to put on those activities, because they do get funded by the council, Arts Council and a few others. So this is something I'm gonna talk to them about. It's hard talking about fixed numbers now, because I need to have these conversations with these groups, to know who's gonna do what, how much you're gonna ship in. Once we have that, that defined, who's doing what, how much it's gonna cost, and who's willing to pay for what, then I can have a sort of breakdown on the budget. But in reality, it's not so relevant here for the council, this is not what the. But in reality, it's not so relevant here for the council, this is not what the proposal was about because, yes, we don't have money for actual festivals, we're trying to count down costs. Agreed, understood, I voted for it, not a problem. What I really need is the support with the licensing, the grants, to be able to do, to put this event and some of the, some of the facilities. Now, another one that's gonna be in the committee is Larry Gray, well known for his fanfare. Um, Larry's got the benefit of already doing this a lot of times and already sort of knowing his way around putting an event. Um, it comes with the other donors that he already has the connections for, hiring toilets, you know, discounted prices, you know, finding better deals. And he's very keen to help in everything then, so I think for us as a group, for this event, there'll be a bigger input or a bigger contribution from Larry, on the financial side, um, towards helping us out, get this off the ground rather than him just doing it for, for this game essentially, you know. Yes, you might still gain something, but that's not his primary concern. Very fortunate, I have a good relationship with him and he's really to support us. And if that means earning less but being able to contribute with the licences and toilets and everything, he'll do that. So this is one meeting I have to get done between November and December. I'll have something more definitely by the end of, by, maybe December I would say, because I still am gonna be to the record, meeting with Larry, a really good meeting. And then I'll have a more project lined up of activities and costs. I have a gazillion institutions that can come on board. Some of them are free, which is why we need, it's because less. Um, for example, the music projects which I sit on the board, they will come in and perform. Uh, there will be other groups that are gonna perform and have no cost to us or only the cost of logistics, like for example the transport, you know, reasonable cost to come on the day. But not for the performance themselves, you know, from different, n- n- nationalities, different groups. I spoke to the Polish school, they're looking to add into. Um, Brecon's wanna talk with their team from Homestow, Ukraine, which is back at the programme, they have an association based in Europe. Just wanna talk to them to see how they can come in and put on a performance, be part of it. Uh, I mentioned the pound job, um, we are gonna reach out, and this is, this is a bit, bit of a stretch, but, you know, fingers crossed. Reach out to the boroughs of this London. Now, we have the overspill in a big historical link there and there's still elements of that, so cultural link there for, for the locals especially and that it's very connected. Um, so, you know, second generation people still feel those links to there, to there, to, to London. And what I'm gonna try to do is see if I can link up with them, get a little bit of collaboration and support. It doesn't necessarily need to be money, but certainly they can, i- if not nothing else, they can send us a few performers, you know, so it's over, they can fill up the festival. And the more we get, a co- a cost free, the better for us, the more we can do without, you know, straining ourselves. Um, I spoke to Lycina, got a great relationship with George, the manager. They will need to put a little, uh, film festival with the, you know, with the multicultural elements, like a foreign film festival to offer, we can make a special sessions. We are lucky that we're gonna have some films being provided specially for the embassy in Brazil, so we have got Brazilian movies that are gonna be, you know, subtitles of, you know, different films from different nationalities. Um, and he did mention that he can either put a little film fest outside on the legal side of, um, so where they do summer events. Because initially I use a large screen, you can put there, you know, screens and movies there on the open, and that's great if the weather's good. If not, they'll use the rooms inside and you can screen those movies throughout, throughout there, et cetera, and someday. Um, so my, my colleagues, which as soon as we film, I know I mentioned managers until I further the whole constitution. Once we all find the paper, I know exactly for sure who's on the paper, I know there's colleagues, some people on the table that wanna be in it. Um, once we have the defined committee, I will supply a copy to the council for the council room and for everybody to see. Um, but fortunately through some links from the committee, we're gonna be able to talk to the, uh, to the museums. Uh, especially Steve Museum, it'd be great if they could blow Steve Museum, uh, Steve mentioned on the, on the marketplace or something like that. Even if not necessarily Saturday, maybe on Saturday or after afternoon or maybe on Sunday for a little while, just to come and fill in the town. And give us different locations of different events taking, taking place, and different activities taking place in town throughout the two days. The idea is we have something always going on, not necessarily in the same place, but say, say we do this event and the stage and the performances on not for common, you know, besides the, beside the fair. Um, or because the fanfare is there and there's noise, perhaps we take this to the riverside. I talked to Brecon, we put the main performances on riverside, which is also a possibility, we're trying to work out the best location. Here's riverside with Brecon's council licence. If it's not for common, this town is us. So that's the kind of support with getting the paperwork and going at those risk assessments. I might be able to get some sponsorship and some support in kind with the medics, uh, the security team, maybe, um, marketing, et cetera. Like I said, it will become through sponsorship, from sponsorship from corporate entities in town, a service through the county council with the, with Brecon council. Um, the schools, we're gonna try and run a little bit of a competition, if they come along and get a prize on the day, is a way of the kids come out of the house, if the kids come out of the house, the parents come. By, by extension, is a way of getting people to the festival, get, get people outside doing something, actually be part of it, getting people outdoors basically. Um, I will be, you know, obviously putting through the channels, media, uh, whether it's news, newspapers and, and radio channels throughout and outside of this thing, obviously because I have those connections, I may be able to publicise this and bring some people in for the event. I think I covered the most of it, but if there's any questions, I'm sure there will be. Please tell me, because it's a lot, and I have done half the work and it's still half to go. It is a lot, go on then. Yeah.
I'm by all. Trying to get my head around, so you, you're trying to community events, and is it got like a more sort of European focus?
It is the way I see it is many big grounds, many nationalities, many cultures, one community, as the desperate community festival. Um, we're all one community, but we all have different roots, whether it's Zelensias or Migris or whatever. But it's to bring all those elements and make sure that there is a festival that cater for everybody, the locals, the hosts, the migrants, et cetera. So there's elements of different cultures.
So would you have like a sort of Polish hour and a Portuguese hour?
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the idea. We're gonna have performances of different nationalities, languages and cultures and make a programme where we can fit them in and having them all sort of lined up. What we think is morning sessions and things, perhaps we do something more family friendly for people, the little children, maybe include schools performance where the, the kids can participate, the Tessa music project, a few hours. The kids will come, it's in good daytime, you know, it's more of a family's feeling to it. Towards the end of the day, we can put some music performances and something more of a bit of an adult crowd or, you know, young adult crowd and, and just to get into performance towards afternoon, towards the end of the day. It's just organising in a way that we can flow the people. We don't need necessarily to have two thousand people we want to go, but if we have five hundred to a thousand at a time per session, or it depends on what's going on. That's even my books is a win, that's the idea anyways.
So would you be, you said, making the Punjab festival lot, I mean for?
I'm gonna talk to them. Uh, they mentioned we could plan polls, but I think that, that's, that's gonna be difficult.
Yeah, because they normally, that is.
They do theirs in August, yeah. So what I think we're gonna do is bring.
Sorry, can I just interrupt?
Yeah, sure.
So can we bring this back in January, so we?
We can, so by then I'll have numbers in.
Yeah.
I'll have, I'll have some numbers and.
Sorry, can I interrupt?
I can talk to you about that.
That's fine. Yes, we, no, we are in line.
That's all right.
No, it's gonna, it's okay, we need to go.
I know a bit of your team, there's no questions done to me afterwards because we're still putting out one on a plan and then I'll present it to the council after, that's not a problem.
Yeah, so maybe you can note, um, just note the item now, is everyone happy to do that and then we'll pick it up again.
No, we think I have it up together, is the waiting orders for the event in place for?
Yes.
From the council with the resources of the grants and maybe because it was five minutes necessary for the event, so is, is there best support in place?
In January, yeah.
Okay, no problem. We'll do that.
Right, okay, so we'll move on to the next thing, which is four oh six two four. Um, reviewers of venue hire charges, concessions and booking terms.
I think in terms of this particular, uh, our fees will be quite static for quite a while. Uh, year, for the last few years, they've, they've stayed the same and our costing points have gone up quite significantly. So what I've done in the papers, I've actually put three, there, there, there's two tables, the one is what is our current rate? And I've had to, I've, I've made reference to that because the decision was taken long ago, I think in nineteen, two thousand and six or something. To, to upcharge this property, these premises for bad purposes. We actually paid that to refreshments and our bar sales and our fine, all high fees. So when you look at what we charge, it's all that's inclusive, so I've taken it out, that's just to make sure it's comparable and, and we understand what's, what's the real revenue. If you ever look at the table, uh, which is our, our current fees, uh, some of those fees, because of the concessions in particular, are extremely low. I mean, we, you know, for the store court, that room, you know, the former old tea room, um, uh, on a concession rate, you can, Monday to Thursday, it's four pounds seventeen an hour. You know, our current staff rates are fifteen pounds an hour, so you can just see that there's a huge discrepancy. And we just haven't kept up to date with increasing this on a gradual, on a, on a, on a, on a year by year basis. I've put a, uh, and this is, uh, um, David really put this together, and this, the next table, which is, um, comparisons with other venues that offer similar size. We've got venues similar size to what we offer in this, in this premise, and we've got venues similar size of the Carnegie. We've actually just put some, some, um, comparatives there, and you can see that our rates are relative, are, are, are quite low. Uh, uh, certainly against venue one and, and venue two, our rates are, are, are pretty low, uh, um, when, when you look at that. On the third table, we've actually put forward a proposal, uh, and office of recommendation. And again, it's one of these things that is really difficult to, to catch, you know, we, we can't increase our rates hugely. Uh, but we'd rather put in place a system where we can actually get, you know, every time, get our rates and keep them increasing with inflation. Because I think that's really what's happened to us, uh, 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 going forward. Um, the other thing that we really need to check here about these offices is that it, it doesn't cost really much to care take. Uh, and say, you know, Monday to Friday, Monday to Friday, jumping office out, because we've got care, so we've got C C B, we've got some of the offices, we can keep them up. And we're not employing additional staff. Where the challenge comes is that on a weekend and after hours, we are employing staff, certificate to come in. And when you're trying to pay fifteen pounds an hour, you've got to recover quite a significant amount in your, in your tariff to cover that and any other costs. You know, the utility costs have to be added, et cetera. So what we've done is we've actually put a proposal there, but fundamental to this is to change concessions. At the moment, concessions are given to organisations, so even your private sector organisations that pay three months in advance, you know. Uh, um, why we do that, I have no idea. Uh, uh, it doesn't make sense to me, but it doesn't have to because I'm not, I'm not the council, uh, 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 um, people sitting in front of me. But what we've tried to do is phase out the concessions. The concessions are only to charitable organisations or constituted community groups. If you're an organisation and you wanna book three months in advance, well, if you wanna secure your commercial activities, you've got to book it. Pay the, pay the amounts of money in advance to secure that, whether you wanna take the risk and pay one month in advance, two months in advance or three months. But to offer an incentive to do that really does have an impact, uh, 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 on our, on our kind of revenue potential. The last thing that, that, that we've talked about is, is to ensure that these things never fall off the agenda. To kind of give the offices a mandate that fees will go up every year by five percent unless this committee decides otherwise. So if the paper comes to this committee and says all our costs have gone up by ten, whatever the case may be, but just to have it, it, it's kind of built in that there is an, an annual increase. That's there, even if this committee for some reason can't meet, whatever the case may be, we implement that, that particular charge. So the four recommendations is to, uh, 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 look at the proposed charges. The second one is to restrict concessions to charities and constituted organisations. Thirdly, to eliminate concessions after five P M, because that's when we're paying additional staff, uh, uh, to care take. And that's off, on an annual basis, venue fees increase by five percent unless this committee decides otherwise. So those are the recommendations that we've made.
Matt, and then Matt.
Um, in my opinion, yes to all four, nicely, is it the, especially thank you for the comparison rates as well, that's incredibly good. Also, thank you for making them whole numbers and all this seventeen pounds sixty-three an hour, it's ridiculous. Thank you for just, you know, a flat penny, lovely. Um, absolutely yes, after five, um, for staffing reasons. Um, and I think fine for the charities and the community groups. And what was your fourth one? The, the increase, yeah.
Yeah, every year.
A blanket support. Yeah, a blanket support, been overdue.
I, I was just gonna say exactly the same, yes to everything. It does feel like sometimes we're stuck in a bit of a loop in this council. It doesn't matter whether we're talking about, you know, rates that we're paying an ear or I T systems that we haven't updated. It, it always seems that we're all of a sudden presented with a problem because we haven't done something in the past. I think by putting the rates up to an incredible amount, which they all are, and then having those incremental rises screwed into what we're gonna do in the future. I think it saves us and, and whoever follows us an awful lot of angst in the future, so thank you.
Terry then by all.
Um, well, I'm, I'm, I'm not very far from training, I could say yes to all. Um, I, I think the, um, the council only having incorporated, um, bodies, um, with, um, with a constitution, uh, is, is very important. I also think it matches up with what we do when we're giving out grants. So if we standardise that, that the people we work with have to be incorporated, have to have a constitution. I, I think that's a, I think that's a good metric to have across the board when we're dealing with people. Um, and I think they should pay to use council facilities. Um, if, for example, some, one of those groups is, say, I'll figure off the top of my head, signal their making or something. We have to either pay them for it or put it out to tender, so it's a fair and honest, um, process rather than them just getting the gig and that sort of stuff. So a- again, it's about process, I think. Um, the other thing I would ask really, um, the, in the writers' group, we help them out.
Then you jump to the next agenda.
Yeah, okay, all right, all right.
Next. Bye, love.
Sorry.
Um, thanks. Yeah, I was just gonna ask about five percent, wonder whether we should, if they're tied to inflation, just, um, you know, in case obviously prices rise more than five percent, which could happen, or obviously, um, if there's no inflation, which is unlikely, we might be a bit unpopular if we suddenly putting our prices up. You know, we wouldn't wanna kind of alienate anyone because of that, so would it be better to do it that way? I'm sure you've discussed this and thought about this.
I, I think it was really just a matter of having an increase, uh, and if inflation was pretty high. I'm, that, that we are going to do is we're actually gonna move to more activity based costing. So, so, so therefore we will see what, what, what the, what the cost of the venues are, because we're gonna have the cost of electricity, the staffs and everything else allocated to them. So that's gonna drive that, that particular discussion, but it's just to make sure that if this committee, for example, you know, when we come to the budget and we know that inflation's less than five percent, we start bringing up the tariffs by five percent. This committee will always have oversight over that. But I think it's really, the, the, the more activity based costing we do, the more the cost drive home as to how much it does cost us to run this venue. So I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah.
Matt and Carla, did you say something, Matt?
Uh, no, sorry, I was just nodding in absolute agreement, sorry.
Carla.
I agree with you on that point, rather than standard hours on paper, it's five percent, it's just legal and open. And that, you know, annual increases will be aligned with it, with inflation will be decided on a yearly basis. And then we can just on every year on, we can decide how much an increase is gonna be aligned with whatever inflation's going on in the markets. And then just policyize that this is this is practice and cost aligned with the decision for this year, and they can always revise it on a yearly basis together.
Any other comments? Right, so, um, do you want to go through recommendations on the time you get it, proposed from second or do them all together? All together? All together, um, okay, so we've got a proposal for all four recommendations, Matt? A second of, Matt? Good.
Five, five.
This, this, this.
One of the terms of conditions to be brought up.
Sorry, I'm a miscreant. There's five and I didn't speak about the writers' group and then that, but then it comes onto the next one.
Actually, this is one, the fifth, we'll, then take one, then I'll go to that one.
Oh, sorry, yeah, yeah. You're actually right.
Cool.
Sorry, I was gonna, I was just scammed there and I'm like, okay, the terms and conditions one. I think I love that.
That was on the W page for me.
Yeah.
Um.
If you're ready.
So, so. So are we okay to put the fifth one on those? So are we okay to put the fifth one on those?
Happy to propose, happy to.
Second, that one as well.
And you're happy for the reservation.
Yeah.
Sorry about that, it's my fault. It's over the page for me too.
Right, okay, moving on. Four O seven two four, use of Guildhall facilities and council staff time for in-house community groups. Right, everybody has had a report on that. Is there any comments? Terry.
Yes. The writers group.
Yeah.
Um, so not only do they, as far as I'm aware, they don't do anything for us. They do actually do things for other people, so I'm not really sure why we subsidise them to do stuff for other people. And, uh, yeah, that's my point, Chris.
Are they right? Like content for other magazines beyond council projects. Do they, they contribute to council projects as well?
Yeah. Do they? The church hall, they have written, um, for places that we've articulated and, uh, delivered here. They've, um, written content for our school visits programme, they've con-. So what you need to understand is these, um. Oh, Terry.
Sorry, your, your language, what you need to understand, I don't think is, is, um.
Well, you, you, you're appropriate. But what you're doing is you're alluding to.
Don't tell me what I'm doing, David. This is, this is not acceptable.
Can you just let David answer?
So the people that attend, attend voluntarily. They have a passion to write. So they are being taught by K T as part of a legacy project. Now, you can argue whether it's a legacy project or not. They continue their passion in their own time by choosing to write for other entities. How can we control that? It's the volunteers, they're following a passion, they've been taught something, they're really infused and they go off and write for whoever. Um, it's a little bit like the volunteers in the conservation group. They didn't go and do someone's garden because they've got a passion for gardening. We can't turn around and say you can't come to the conservation brief anymore because now you're giving other people's gardens. It's, it's, I think it's going a little bit too far.
Um, in general, um, for a whole overview. Um, whilst I do appreciate, you know, these are, are small groups, they were funded, um, by the county projects and concluded there's not a lot of money left. I don't think we can start the precedence of offering for free. We have things in place that, um, small grants schemes. I assume all of these have a bank account and a constitution as a group. Then, then, then I strongly suggest they go and get them. Um, and we will be happy to support them as a small group, but I, I don't think we can start because I, I, one thing I detest is the what about game. And I'm going to be an absolute hypocrite and play it myself, but where do we draw lines? They are no longer funded by who, whom they were funded by. They are now just external groups and that's, that's no, uh, uh, criticism to what they've done in the past. Excellent, thank you so much. If you want to become a group, get a constitution, we will more than happily support you with the money we can. But i- i- if we're going to do it for one week, open an absolute floodgate for every other group to turn up and say, hang on, they're getting it for free, we've just fired prices up.
That's exactly the decision you need to make tonight, Matt. That's, that's, that's different, that's a different proposal. We started this through, um, the N H L F, uh, heritage fund. That funding finished in December of last year. We continued it as a legacy project because that funding also developed the Guildhall as a Guildhall heritage fund. These were considered to be heritage outreach programs. If you, you know, want to stop that now because it's come to the end of the term, that's absolutely fine. Make that decision. But you can't make inferences about people's concerns outside that group because that's unfair.
Carla.
I'm just gonna keep with two, my two pounds, well, that's just my opinion, each one, I don't know, I'm sure, I'm sure. Um, I'm only in favour of, of grassroots projects. I do community work, I wanna share it locally. I know how hard it is for small groups that want to do a charity, sometimes to either have the paperwork or having somebody that can do the paperwork for loans or have the funds to be able to maintain the groups. The intention is there, the wheel is there, the positives that come out of it, like people coming out socialising, their wellbeing. They're all there, they're visible, the impact is visible. But sometimes they like the structure because they are quite small groups. I, I know quite a few, whether it's based for people based here in the Guildhall or across different locations, there's many, many groups in the same boat. Um, I'm an advocate for small groups to survive and to continue their activities. If there's anything we can do to support these groups, to stay in house or to find alternatives to continue their activities, I would be all for it. Um, if it's, you know, Matt, there's a point, maybe we actually need more structure. Perhaps this is something we can help them as a council, say, look, that we can help with maybe sourcing the paperwork that you can put together to make it a constitutional or open that can account, something that can give you some legal status. They really continue to benefit from the, from the councils and from local authorities' support. Um, I would prefer as often the help for them to structure themselves and to, to establish the, the, the resources and the, and the things they need to continue their work rather than, look, the funding is finished, we can no longer help you. There's no money, you got to go. I'm, I'm also, and I'm not in favour of that. I think every group has something to offer, a benefit to the community and for their members, they all take benefits out of it. And I would be supportive of keeping them in house. Obviously, of course, I understand that, perhaps we can adjust the system. Like I said, we have the small grants, um, available rather than, you know, give them the concessions on space. Perhaps we can just say, look, let's pay the, the, the rental for this year through one application to our small grant. It may, it's, it's not, the money's not gonna come in and out, it's just gonna be sort of shifted around. It's just the way we, we work it basically on the paper. But we still continue to give them the kind of support if that's what they need. Also encourage them to find resources of support. Because if their funds have run out, this is, this is quite an intimidating measure. But if the council stays, like, with free services, you know, uh, perhaps this is that law. We want to be officers, it's not somebody that can sit here and help them apply for the support, continue their activities. But that's just me, I'm sure they have no opinions.
Yeah, I am. Quick question, when these groups were offered, uh, at a very, very star, I shouldn't, it was quite a while ago. Were they told it was with an end day when the money will stop?
No. Why not? Why not? I, I think it's, one of the things, a- a- again, this is one of, one of the issues that we, you know, we as officers have to act quite respectfully. Is that I think the, the constitution of these bodies and the involvement of these bodies has grown. I found out this year that Fifty Strings was created this year. I, I was actually saying, I had an idea that we all started another community group which, 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 which operated. So I think what we've got is we've got, we've got a lack of information about all these, these activities and what they do and what they don't. My view is really different to, to David's view. I mean, I've had lots of discussions with the town clerk over this, the town clerk has helped write together this, this, this particular paper. But I think it's, you know, it's who is our customer at the end of the day. Our customer is the person walking down the street, that's our res- that's our resident. And how do we actually pass that? We have to do community, we have to support community projects. I think that's part of being what, what a council does, we provide toilets, we provide facility. But I think it's really a matter of balancing that with who pays for that and how does, how, how do we get benefit? There's no community outreach, I don't think. I, I, I think it's been a very intuitive group. So I think we need to change the way that we, that we, that we, that we run the community groups. But we do have to understand who is, who's benefiting from it and should the council be paying for it? You know, if, if some of the, you know, my personal view, and I'm sorry for expressing that, you know, please tell me to shut up if I did. But it's, you know, you could benefit from these things, you know, if that's the singers, you know, do you go to an organisation, you pay a nominal membership fee and then you can do that and that will fund your venue costs and everything else. So there is another model at which, at which could operate. I just think that this, that the fact that, you know, I have found out how the community groups go this year. In fact, just before the last meeting and I, and I had a heart attack because I didn't realise that these were all free hires. I actually thought they were hired in ve- events. So that again, it's just part of the, the lack of communication, et cetera. And I'll shut it off.
Okay, and Stuart, uh, let me go.
Yeah, I, I think historically, we tried to do more with the Guildhall and to try and get the, get the money. We, we offered these outreach things to nurture the groups, uh, and that succeeded and they've come forth. The, what they do offer, you know, you used to talk about the, who's our customer, but yes, our resident. But our resident has been enriched by their, um, the, you know, the crafting group with stuff, hobbies and knitted and they're doing, uh, I think at the moment, um, I think to be, uh, famous places at Deppard. And I declare an interest in my wife has recently joined that crafting group, so I know what they're doing. But, so it's open to anybody who wants to come along, but it's obviously a certain type of thing on a Wednesday off, Wednesday morning. You're not gonna get, well, you're gonna get all retired ladies to come along to that. But that has offered them a way of giving something back to Deppard, um, as part of that craft group. Like the, you know, the singers have performed at numerous, um, town events, uh, through the maitaking, um, and, and to that. The writers group have given us, the E day, some of those writers group supported the, um, narrative that was put there because of the skills they've learned, I think. So the town has been enriched by the projects of them. Yes, I understand that, you know, the cost pressures on us all. But I think if you look to start charging them for it, or if you say, right, you've got a constitution, we had sex rotten wrong reading. They folded, a lot of that was because they didn't get any funding because they hadn't the constitution. Um, and they didn't, the people who were involved with that didn't want to get themselves into a committee and do it all formalisation, which is what we're potentially asking these groups to do. And I suspect some of those won't want to formalise it. So maybe is there a way that we connect an umbrella to support them and go for grants? So whether it be a Guildhall crafts thing, a setup with a town council, getting them going along, which then gets that ability to go for an art council bid or a town council bid to then contribute to some of the costs involved. But I think shutting the door straight away is the wrong way to go.
Did you say something?
Yes, I do, I did this time. Um, Stuart stole my sandwiches a little bit. I was gonna say that we, we really actively encourage volunteer groups through the town, whether it be, you know, um, uh, exter, you know, the weeding and, and they're looking after the town. Um, can we not do the same with this and then grow those as our own volunteer groups? So, you know, we've set them up as a project and they've gone off and done some stuff for us, but it's not, it seems a little bit, um, we're lucky as to what we've got out of it. I think if we kind of own it a little bit more, then there is an opportunity where they will have a set constitution because we've done it for them, you know, they can get their grants and I, and I agree with you. The, I, I do think it's valuable to, to add some things that don't make us a lot of money. What I would say is I'm surprised at how much tea and coffee that group drinks.
Um, right, we've got Doug, then Matt, then Carla, and then Terry, Terry.
Um, I get those points, I think they're, they're, they're very fair, to be honest. Um, I, I, one of the things I was looking at was the recommendation, I go, you know what? I like that there's a thing that they can report because actually we don't know the way they're doing, usually writing, saying, I didn't know specifically that, I didn't know what it could do. Reporting, really, but actually isn't that much fairer to say, okay, let's get them to the port and they go to the port and go, okay, this is what we do, we'd like some money for it. In which case that gives us that very clear picture of what they're going to do. Why aren't they getting some money if you can therefore make industries now go, oh, that's nice, they're doing that kind of stuff. You can see, okay, bang, it's unpaid, that's all right. Kind of favour that method. I do think we mainly consider how we support them in terms of getting constitutions. I really take your point about we don't want to add barriers and we don't want no complexity, but it, it seems to me a logical way to do it. Get them to provide us evidence and then we can give you money and help. That seems to be the way to go.
I'm gonna caveat my own point, I may do it. I'm actually gonna suggest that maybe we defer this decision to go away and think of some more ideas. Because the reason why I am, I am torn on things in, in, in my job, this is the equivalent of a fixed term contract. That contract's a end of. You don't keep an employee on and start paying him a wage even, you know, when the contract's finished. You start fresh branding, new contracts and then the money's dried up, it's gone. They need to, they need to, um, to, to pay. However, very valid points on all sides. I think we, that's why I want to go away and have a think because maybe we make a third payment structure. Normal hourly rate, concession rate, and then the heritage project rate where they pay a lot less. Maybe we, we absorb the groups and it becomes that for town council craft group, that for town council writers group, that for town council choir. And we absorb them in-house and they are, it's more like we're almost putting it on and we can justify absorbing some of the costs. But I just, I don't think, well, we've already had three completely separate ideas on the table. I don't think we're gonna get to a consensus where we can vote on it today without going away and genuinely coming back to another meeting and say, this is my proposal, what do you want, then? And each of us put a proposal forward, I can't, I can't. I have my idea of bang on no. I, I'm still, you know, you know, a harsher way, but you both, Matt and Stuart, have made very good points. We do absolutely to support the group. I would also request if we can have a more detailed report about, um, what, what, what they do, what they support. If there's a justification of they absolutely are integral to the town, it's not all of our money, as, as Matt said, we do need to keep these. They do do things, but if we can justify, actually, this group does this, 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 this and this, then it might actually people are saying, do you know what? Actually, they are absolutely worth absorbing the cost as a council because they provide X, Y and Z. But right now, uh, two bullet points isn't enough to sway me, so I'm still gonna be quite partial to it. But I do think we need to go away and come up with proposals to present to the group because I heard through this table and we're not gonna get a majority to go on anymore.
No, no, no. Carla, did you just still want to say something?
Sure, Matt's got a good point and I was gonna suggest, one of the things we can look at, actually, if a volunteer's addition of the town council and their volunteers are provides all the groups and activities, they have smaller units that are not constituted, say, the living group, the, the craft group. And actually, if somebody, they're the coordinator, one of the officers or we pay somebody in for a few hours a week or one of the officers they go on a roll, coordinate the agency with those groups and integrate them as part of the council and sort of volunteers of the council if they don't want to be constituted independently or if they're small to do it, like was the challenge of the basic living group. And the other thing is, we're gonna put in a page for the heritage, heritage for the buildings. Heritage for the buildings is great and the buildings need to be kept. The question is, once you have the buildings, all lights and creatures, how, who is the people you're gonna serve? You're gonna serve the people that serve. So you need the buildings to be used and if a building needs to be used, you need to support the groups that use the buildings. In my perspective, one doesn't go without the other. When you put a building, a bidding to refurbish your buildings, to maintain your structures, you have to consider what's the purpose of those buildings? Who's gonna use them and what's the benefit to the community? I think we should start looking at those things, thank you.
So you, are we agreed then that we should defer this? Yeah.
I think it's acceptable to me.
Yeah, and then we need a bit more information about what the best, what the groups do and the benefits from that. Um, um, that we could come back and, and make, and if committee members have another think about a way of doing this. I just admit, I don't know if it's right, but I'm more in your book, Matt, that I think.
I just say one final thing.
You know, it's, it just subsidises a, a few people and not a lot of people. That's, that would just be my, this is my, yeah, so.
Could I just say one final thing? Because I think, I think as officers, we've really moneyed the waters here. And I just want to make one final comment. So when it does come back, you are addressing it from the right perspective. As part of our bid, I think what we did wrongly, because I think you're all getting muddled, is we've given these guys labels. They are not a group, they're not an entity, they're, they're just people who turn up. The crafters differ from week to week. I mean, you know, some weeks we have three, some weeks we have six completely different people. It's the same with the singers. The only one I would say out of all of those is the strings. Uh, you know, it's just, I don't know, really how that came about, but the writers group, the choir, we should have just said it's a community singing group that comes together on a Monday night. It's not an entity. It's not to say that if we decided not to continue, the writers group, for instance, couldn't, couldn't set up a constituted group called the Thetis Writing Collective or something like that. But at the moment, they are not a group. So if we can't go to them and say, the only way you can come back is if you make the consti- I mean, what we need to address here is are we deploying the officer's time in the right way? Or has our, has our outreach programmes in, in Or has our has our outreach programmes in in this context come to an end? So I think you're right, Matt. We just need to say, have we come to an end or are we gonna continue? But if we continue, it will just be a community gathering of people who want to come along and sing. I can't say the person's name, but there's someone that you all know that comes along every now and again and sings just because she fancies singing on a Monday night. But she doesn't come every week. And she's never performed at the mayor making and all the rest of it. Because she just wants to get in the room and just sing her lungs out. But she doesn't want to perform in 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 front of everybody. It literally is a community gathering. But if we come to the end of that because we want to deploy our officer in a different area, that's the decision you need to make. I think we're making more of these entities that don't exist.
Okay, maybe then next time we can have a bit more information so we can make it particularly. Yeah, do we need to have a, no, no, we can just agree that. Yeah. Okay, right. Um, progress on actions from previous meetings. If we can do it really quickly, we've got a minute.
It is really quickly because all the actions have been, uh, you know, this one, I think. I've gone through all the actions that were stated and. If you scroll down to.
I didn't just jump and say, right, yeah, one I noticed and it's just because I was trying to read it. Um, actually, many reference one, six, eight, twenty-four, educational engagement for schools. Educational engagement for schools, committee officer to meet with civil officers, we have to find that and then ends. Um, so. That's, sorry, sorry, it's me cutting and pasting a X or document into a, to a word document. I'm sure I'll use Excel. I need lots of training. Yeah, well, I'm gonna use my office file on that. On that, what's actually thirty?
Um, I'll send it updated. Okay, we will update it in the future.
Yeah, okay. Right, thank you. Okay, everyone have a bit to note those actions.
Yeah.
Right, um, committee officers update. An update.
Referee council have written to us to ask us to apply if they, if we want to get funding for the V and V and V J day. We have to have an application invited in the centre. So as officers, we'll just.
Yes, please. Yes.
It's like five hundred pounds of the big cost of the turkey about every one. That's the only update that we have. So if if the officers could do that, apply for the next month, we'll do that.
Yes, please. Thank you. Right, that's it. Thank you very much.
So it's even worse now, sometimes, and then three come and bring out.